Excuse me? Any students tonight? Students?
They don't come anymore.
Oh.
They just don't participate in government ceremonies anymore.
So, participation in government no longer requires participation in government.
No. I found that out the other day.
Be sure for our educational system. Good to know, thank you. And who's the president? All right, okay, at any rate, welcome everyone to the 10th regular meeting of the Cisro Town Board. I'd like to point out the emergency exits. We have two in the back of the room and we have one to your left. Please silence your cellphones or other electronic devices because the meeting is not unnecessarily disturbed. If you must speak on your cellphone, please exit to the back hallway or outside. We also ask the audience to keep chatter to a minimum so as not to disturb others. The town acknowledges the importance of public participation in all meetings and hearings, and we therefore urge all who wish to address the board to utilize the microphone at the front of the room. If anyone is unable to hear, please let us know so that adjustments can be made as necessary. Councilor Conley, the pledge will leave.
.............................................
We please remain standing so we can have a moment of silence for our troops in harm's way. Thank you. The Town Board minutes of the regular Town Board meeting held on April 24, 2019, and May 8, 2019.
Second. Any board comments or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Or nay. Any abstentions, we pass unanimously. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve abstract number 20 dated May 15, 2019, and abstract number 21 dated May 22, 2019, as presented.
Second.
Any board comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Or nay. Any abstentions, we pass unanimously. Thank you.
Budget mids, there are none.
Nope. Which takes us to the town logo. I'll give you just a little bit of background, Nicole Walsh, who was a member of the Oversight Committee, will speak to it. The town of Cisro has changed, and we are, although we have a rich heritage, the existing logo and the opinion of folks who work in this building and myself, didn't adequately reflect who we had become or where we're going. When we came here three years ago, three and a half years ago, one of my personal goals was to make the town of Cisro a leader in Anadog County on many indices, and we have done just that. So, we did a couple things. We talked to a couple of logo, professional logo designers. They, we couldn't get any sort of consensus inside of Town Hall. No one really liked the initial test or logos that they had come up with. So, the idea was forwarded, or actually made by Jody Rogers, that we put it out to the community, let the community design a logo and, or come up with designs for a logo that better reflected who Cisro was. I'll turn it over to Nicole, talk to us about the committee.
Okay, so, the committee was chosen by people in Town Hall. We had, we had someone from the chamber, from the school districts, from the senior center, from the canteen, from the employees of In-Town Hall, and with, you know, myself elected and planning board on the committee. So, there was a total of seven of us, and there was 26 logos that were submitted, and we whittled it down to what we thought were the top three to be selected by the board. That's pretty much what we did.
And the final three are the three that you see up there at the committee out of the 26, correct?
Yes.
Any logo that's selected really can't be our logo until the owner that, we don't know who the folks are who drew them. We do know who, but we don't here in town.
But, yeah.
Would have to sign off, obviously, and give the town of Cisro the legal rights to own that logo or trademark agreement. So, that being said, and then I tried to kind of get out of being the final vote on this, and I asked the committee if they would, wanted to choose a finalist, and it was, no, no, no. No, we all want the board to do this. So, at any rate, we have three up there. Logo one, logo two, and logo three. That being said, there was some disagreement on some of the logos, and the counselors who have those disagreements will discuss them with you. But at this point, are we ready to take a vote?
Okay, I think there should, I'd like to have the discussion before we take a vote.
Alrighty.
So, I'm going to apologize in advance because what I say now might not make some people happy. I'd like to start off by saying I have zero artistic ability. I recognize that these three logos, and I've also seen all the candidates, some of their representatives are outstanding artwork, truly professional, I mean, I know they were professionals, but they all look professional. It's absolutely fine working, and people put a lot of effort into it. Unfortunately, in my view, reviewing these three logos, which are all excellent artwork, I don't believe that any of them are suitable for this purpose. When I saw them, I thought of actually exactly what Sergeant Myers is wearing, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, a polo shirt the police department wears. I can't see any of those on a police department polo, being worn by a man with a badge and a gun. I just can't. I can't see any of them on a highway department seal pile, or the other new, or a police department patch, right, the other numerous applications. I can see them on letterhead, absolutely. You know, we don't have to pick one of these, I mean, we could certainly solicit other designs, and I, people are going to take this as an insult, and I don't have any intention of doing that. Bottom line is, we are voting now on something that the town of Cisro is probably going to have as a logo for quite some time, and it's going to appear all over the place, not just on letterhead and on signs. And to me, if that decision is being made, it should be made on the basis that we have done everything we can to exhaust all the opportunities and all the options, instead of saying, well, these are the three that we have, and I pick one of them. Again, this is nothing against the hard work of the people, the committee, or the artists, and people are probably going to take offense, and I apologize for that, but I'm just, I'm doing what I feel is my job. I don't, I just do not see any of those in that application, in some of those applications. The other thing I would like to say is, and this is not, this is nothing against the artists. The two on the left, I mean, I'll leave the one on the right off, this comment because it does show the lake, but it shows other things. The two on the left evoke primarily the lake, and we all know we have the lake in Cisro. The majority of Cisro is not on the lake. The majority of the population in Cisro does not live near the lake. I live in Hiller Heights, it's not near the lake, okay? Supervisor Vasquez is off Cath Road, not near the lake. Counselor Cushman, and this is all public, so I'm not throwing, you know, throwing anyone's head around. You know, Mr. Cushman lives over closer to Home Depot in Shickford. Now, Counselor Conley and Counselor Blake, you do love the lake. But, this is saying this is who Cisro is, and yet the two logos on the left talk about a very small portion of Cisro. Huritons on the lake, and the lakeshore communities in the lakes, Bridgeport's kind of close to it, but those New Syracusees on the lake, the area, other areas I mentioned are on the lake. So, if we pick one of the two, the left one or the middle one, are we really picking something that represents Cisro? And to me, the answer's no, we're picking something that represents a very, very small section of Cisro. An important part is the lake is a defining feature of our community, but it doesn't represent all of Cisro. The one on the right, I think has potential, it's a little bit busy, I think, but it does show other things besides the lake, that we have something else besides that, and that could perhaps evoke the Plank Road, which is, are the reason why Cisro is here. Anyway, that's my view on this, and I apologize to anyone who's offended, because it's, it's just, I can't in good conscience just say, well, I feel obligated to pick one of these three. So, unfortunately, I will be forced to abstain from voting on which of the logos gets elected.
Counselor Conley, you want to?
I think that we should keep a little of the old Cisro in this. So, I think that the old one we had with Slay was, you know, back in the 1900s. Of course, we've been here a long time.
All right. Counselor Cushman, what are your thoughts?
Well, when I first looked at him, not really putting a lot of thought into it, I apologize because I'm involved with a lot of other things going on right now, but I thought the one in Center looked nice, and I looked at the one at the right, and I goes, well, it's still got the 1807, which shows our, I think that symbolizes the Plank Road. Most people don't know there was actually two roads, a dirt road and a plank road side by side, and that shows a wider section, which would have been the way it was set up, Plank Road and then the dirt road, they returned with the empty parts from the city. And the houses, because we're growing, and the lake, so it's probably the most representative of the three, put a little bit of history in it.
I like the, I like the cattails for the Cisro swamp. Yeah, the one-room schoolhouse looks like another.
We could probably add a mosquito logo on top of the sagu or something, I don't know. But again, I, I gotta apologize, I'm no artist, and I know they put a lot of work in it, and if this, they said was the three best, I wouldn't have no problem voting to pick one of those three, but that's just my feeling.
Mrs. Boiki.
Well, for all of you who don't know this, I do my career in school, and my endeavor was four years of art and music. And I showed an interest in the very beginning when this contest come about, but unfortunately, I was not, I didn't have the opportunity to join the team. I have a question. When this group got together, when these were all submitted, did you sit down as a group and physically look at them and talk to them?
Well, not talk to people, because...
What, no, I meant, I meant the group.
............
Okay, and I appreciate your sending them to me, because I had an opportunity to see them off, and I found a couple that showed a little more of what I felt, first of all, of the heritage, of us as a community, and yes, I do live on the lake, but most of us will live on La Tecta. So, depicting the water kind of is good and bad. I feel, from my artistic standpoint, and I also do digitizing, that the Center logo, and no offense against anything, but it looks like it's a Pecico logo. The O sort of jumps out at me. I have a question on the first one. The copy that I got, it said more than a lakeside community on it. Has that since been taken off?
Yeah, it's the plan version.
No, because this is the one I got. Look at these. So, I'm just looking up at it now, and I'm bummed something's different from the one that I was originally received. So, that's gone. Okay, so, all right. Anyway, I, I am not, I feel like Mr. Carp, and I feel there should be more heritage. I don't have a warm feeling on selecting any of these without some tweaking of some kind, in that I think that putting that to us to vote on at this point in time, when we've only had a few days to look at it, and even discuss it first time together today, that I would have to abstain, I would not be able to vote on it. Thank you.
All right, so we have two no votes. One thinks there should be more heritage, one who would like to consider it's more, I don't want to insult anybody, because I know that a lot of people worked very hard on this, and I want to thank everybody who did submit something, because it's not easy to do. Sit down, take your time, and efforts, and submit something. I believe one of the people who did was a Cisro North Syracuse graduate who now lives in Texas. I believe I was told one of the, one of the people, I don't know who she was, but I was told that that's the case. What I would like to do, I wish we could have wrapped this up tonight, but I'm going to defer it. What I would ask Mrs. Boiki is that you give us some suggestions, or make some suggestions on what needs to be tweaked, and what you would tweak, and see if we can incorporate some of those tweaks to make something that's a little bit more palatable. If everyone's alright with it?
I mean, yeah, because many suggested that they put the established date on, so that's why it's slightly different from what you, what we saw from the website, was because we asked if they would be willing to put that on these ones here, and the board is all were willing to make changes as, you know.
Let's, let's, let's put this off in the next meeting and give Mrs. Boiki an opportunity to make some suggestions, constructive suggestions, and we'll go back to the artists with those suggestions, and we'll have a discussion about it. Is that okay?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Yep. Thank you for everyone putting time on this.
And again, I appreciate the effort, and I truly understand it, and I will do my best.
Thank you. All right, that being said, let's go to the presentation of a proposed project by Brandon Jacobson, G R G Really.
Well, you're not Brandon, you're getting Mr. Thomas Poops of the Apple Brothers for Rolex Properties and Mr. Jacobson.
Hello, Mr. Root.
So, well, we are partners in this new project, and it is the Northern Plains Golf Course Property.
No questions.
We're having trouble hearing you back.
Oh, can you make sure you're speaking to the?
Yep, please do.
You can take off the holder if you need to.
Leave it on.
So, the Northern Plains Golf Course Property is what we're talking about, and we are seeking a zone change to plan unit development, to do a planned residential community. The community will consist of single-family homes and attached townhomes. It's designed to attract a number of different age groups and a different, number of different price points. It will be a private community, it will have a two-tier HOA, homeowners association. The homeowners association would take care of the exterior maintenance on the attached townhouse units. It would also provide, manage the stormwater management for, for the project as a whole, including the ponds, the pension ponds, the ponds that are on the golf course now, any stormwater management features that are incorporated in the plan. It will also maintain architectural control over what is built initially and in perpetuity. So, the two-tier HOA would, would have different price points. The people who have complete exterior maintenance of the attached townhomes would pay a little bit higher monthly common charge than the detached homes. A lot of our other projects where we've done attached homes, we provide everything from fire insurance on the structures, to lawn care, snow removal, roof replacement, and we've had very good luck with that. We've been able to keep the cost down. There is strength in numbers. In fact, there's, these HOAs work better when they are larger, because you have more participation, you have more volunteers, you can fill in committees, your architectural committees, your nominating committee, your board of directors, and all the other ones. So, our plan right now is 315 single-family lots are showing on the property, and a total of 168 attached units. Those numbers could change, depending on the demand of the, of the market. We want to keep some flexibility there, because we don't know what the future holds, we don't know what the aging population is looking for, so we want to have some flexibility there. But in any event, the planned unit development zone appears to be the appropriate tool for this. We plan public sewers, water, natural gas, and electric, and we have done some of our homework. We've, we've wept on the sewers, we've built the natural grid on the gas and electric, and aqua on the water. We have good highway access on Route 31, secondary access over onto Island Road is shown in the plan, and the lot sizes are very diverse, you know, from, you know, they break it down up there using your traditional zoning. However, large estate lots are shaded in the blue, and more conventional-sized lots in the light green. So, that's our, oh, the clubhouse, it's there, the newly constructed clubhouse, I should say, for the golf course, will remain, that will become a facility that will be controlled, operated by the homeowners association, so that building will be preserved. And I should also mention, this is a, it's not going to be built overnight, it's going to be built in phases. In fact, initially, when it gets off the ground, we're going to maintain nine holes of the golf course for quite some time, so the eastern nine holes would be preserved probably for the next five-plus years, depending on sales and marketability of everything. So, it will be phased in. And basically, that's it. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
What about the high tension layers that run right down through that property?
The what?
High power.
High power. I don't know if they showed them on there. I have not really paid a lot of attention to them. We will obviously recognize the existing easement for the power lines, and if there's anything we can do to restructure the layout to avoid them, or to keep some distance or separation, we'd be willing to look at that.
It does run right straight across that property from east to west?
Do you know exactly where?
In the middle.
You know, in fact, I've driven it two or three times with the owners, and I didn't pay a lot of attention to them.
I golf, I golf on that course, I know exactly where they are.
You know how big they are, or what they?
Very big.
Yeah, you know what?
I have no idea, but they're very big, and they home.
Obviously, we need to take into account, people don't like to be narrow, if they, depending on what the voltage is and what they're...
That's why I was, I didn't see them depicting it on your, your site plan, so...
I did not see any of that. I'll bring that to the designers' attention.
Okay.
Yeah, this is early stages, so...
I did have, Mr. Root, I did have a conversation with Mr. Jacobson, and any project that will be built in the town of Cisro will be built to current standards. So, what I mean by that is, is we have road standards, we have, you know, that will apply. Obviously, you would have to meet those standards, and we would actually, we adopted a couple of years ago, core samples, so our town engineer would verify that the roads are built to town standards. Are you looking for, and there was no, there was no issue with Mr. Jacobson?
So, no, I don't see, you know, the sub base and the laptop read your different standards.
Okay.
Right now, I don't think we visualize that we don't maintain any private roadways. My experience has been that they don't stay private forever.
Right.
Most of them end up getting turned over to the municipality, and then we deal with that same issue, so probably better to plan ahead.
I, I, you know, this is an opportunity, this is not a public hearing, it's an opportunity for the board to ask questions. I have no objection to, to bringing a resolution for beauty to this project. You know, Cisro is growing, that's one of the, one of the effects, I think, of what we've tried to do here, to make Cisro a community where people want to live, they want to grow a business, and what you found is, now, and to your studies proving this out, is we have more people who want to live in Cisro than we have housing available. So, you know, that's part of the, you know, the devil in the detail. The good part about it is, is that it grows our tax base, and that type of project will allow the town to, to run the business, because we need revenue to run the business. So, I have no objections to, to coming back for a PUB. Of course, you know, you have to go in front of the planning board, and all of this has to be litigated, and, you know, whatever with those folks, right? God bless you.
That's our next move.
Well, I do have a question myself, but I'm pretty sure, if you check with the planning board, it usually, once a final approval for a project is done, even if it's phased, it has to be completed within three years.
The entire project?
Yeah.
Entire project. You're talking five years, so you're going to have, situated, they do that purposely so that people don't come in and say, I'm going to do one thing, and then halfway through they stop and say they're not going to. That's why they require completion within the three years.
Yeah, I think, I think there's a workaround on that, and, you know, obviously, your attorney will talk to our planning board attorney.
Normally, in the town law, we file a phase, so in two years, we can keep it alive. That's in your local law, or is this something you have to deal with?
Something you have to deal with, yeah. That's all you have.
I don't envision it being built in that short order. Erie Village is 480 units, I think it took us about 15 years.
Can I ask, are you a...
Yeah, we'll be doing the land development and restructuring new homes.
Okay.
Good. Any other questions by the board at this point? None? There being none, Mr. Root, thank you very much. Great success. Thank you for choosing Cisro.
Yeah, good evening.
Good evening, thank you. Judy?
Lost my paper.
Sorry.
Too many papers tonight. Okay. We're going to set a public hearing for a zone change. I move for the adoption of a resolution to schedule a public hearing on Wednesday, June 12, 2019, at 6:30 PM, to consider a zone change from ag, agricultural, to R12 residential one family, to RM residential two family, for the property located at 8681 Weaver Road, tax map number 097 dot dash 01 dash 05 dot 1.
Any board comments? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Or nay. Any abstentions, we pass unanimously. Thank you.
The public sanitary sewer connection for 9011 Beach Road. Move for the adoption of a resolution to allow the property owner, Peter Giordano, of 9011 Beach Road, to utilize Landco companies instead of the town's contractor, to make a connection to the public sanitary sewer system, subject to meeting the town's insurance requirements.
Second. Any board comments?
I have a question. I didn't have an opportunity to check where this property is on Beach Road. Is Mr. Giordano here?
I can probably answer that.
Oh, okay.
Because he lives on the lakeside of Beach Road, and he has, owns a lot on the opposite side of the road, and he's building a garage, and he wants to get plumbing to it, so it's kind of in the middle part of Beach Road.
Because I know that he also owns a property on the ridge, and I was just wondering if it, but it's not there, it's just across the street from where he lives.
Right.
I actually have a question, I don't know if you can answer it, maybe I'm wrong, but it seems to me that every time we have one of these come up, and someone wants to use a different contractor than ours, it seems like it's always Landco. Is there a reason for that? Are they cheaper? No, I'm serious, this is a, it's a good question.
But it seems like every time it's Landco.
Landco used to be the town contractor.
Okay, but I mean, are they cheaper than who we use? Is that why the people are using them?
Well, the town contractor has to pay public wage rates, so that's always going to be a little higher.
I got you, that makes sense, thank you. I just, I noticed there was always this one coming up, that's why, but thank you.
This also brought up another question now, because you said he wants to build a garage on this property. Is there a house on this property?
Across the road, you said.
I understand.
I believe it's an empty lot, but I can't, I can't answer that.
I don't believe that we allow garages built on empty lots unless there's a residential house on the...
I think, I think the, what we're talking about is allowing Landco to do the connection if the house is built, not who's going to build it, whether or not it's allowed. I think we're kind of getting off the track.
I had, I had a question, and it's a legal question, because I sit on the planning board, as he lays on... board, as he lays on, so I'm asking the question. And I don't believe that we've seen this come before the planning board, therefore, all right, I would authorize it to that, but that's as far as it goes.
Okay, any other comments? All, do we have a second?
Yeah.
I, second, or John did. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those nay, any extensions, we pass unanimously, thank you.
Consolidated Sewer District, moving adoption of resolution to pay application one and two, to National Water Main Cleaning Company, in the amount of $19,915.44, and $43,500.27, and $63,415.71, to the Honored, the Nida Park Sewer Improvement Consolidated Sewer District Contract Number Three. Towners receive $72,500 from New York State E F C, which is the Water Infrastructure Improvement Act, W I I A, and $270,000 from the under company towards the project. The town's municipal contribution will be $150,000.
Second. I'll speak to that for a minute. We, we have been very aggressive in applying for grants in, to repair our sewer system. We have a serious I N I problem, infiltration, a water infiltration into our sewer lines, the whole county does, not the entire county, but sometimes are much worse. Going back three years ago, we decided to be proactive with it, not end up in a situation like the Village of Manlius, which is under a consent order, where New York State tells you that you must fix this, and we're gonna tell you how. We were, we decided to take the lead in fixing our own problems, and over the last three and a half years, we've done just about that. I think we've taken, I don't know if you have the number, Kate, but I think it was something like 22 million, by the end of this year, 22 million gallons of fresh water out of the sanitary sewer system. And I have the county executive recognized the town of Cicero as being the leader in attacking this problem countywide. So I'm proud to say that we've been able to get the grants, this helps us to continue relining the pipes and, and taking fresh water out of our sanitary sewer system. Any, any other comments on this? We did get a second?
Yes.
Yes, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those nay, any extensions, we pass unanimously, thank you.
Whereas, a town of Cicero, New York, hearing called the municipality, after third consideration of various aspects of the problem, consideration of available information, is hereby determined that certain work, as described in attachment A, hearing called the project, is desirable, is in the public interest, and is required in order to implement the project, and whereas the Central New York Regional Planning Development Board, hearing called the board, has provided program planning implementation systems pertaining to requirements of New York State Blue and Discharge Elimination System, S V D E S, stormwater phase two general permit for municipal separate storm sewer system, M S four, operator since 2002, and whereas the words proposed staff education assistance services and support of sustaining the C M Y Stormwater Coalition, and to provide a regional public education outreach and training compliance program to reduce municipal staff burdens and shore consistency, provide widespread priority audience targeting most effective, efficient with use and limited municipal funds by distributing total program costs over a number of entities within a 12-month timeframe, as outlined in attachment B. Now therefore, be resolved by the Cicero Town Board, that Supervisor Mark Vaneski is a representative authorized to act on behalf of the municipality's governing body, in all matters related to the project, that the municipality agrees it will fund its portion of program cost amount of $3,600, and that those funds will be made available to the board upon receiving invoice, that once certified, this resolution will be prepared and sent to board upon adoption, that this resolution takes back immediately.
Second. Thank you, Vern, we give a second to Senator Conway. Any board comments? Housekeeping. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those nay, any extensions, we pass unanimously, thank you. I'll move for the adoption of resolution awarding the New York State Route 31 sidewalk extension project to the lowest bidder, Concrete Slipform Incorporated, for a total amount of $180,175, in accordance with a letter from O B G dated May 14, 2019, and authorizing Supervisor to execute the agreement, with the contractor upon provision of the required insurance and funds. Second. I, I just wanna talk to y'all about sidewalks for a minute. I'm very proud that we have tackled the safety issue in this town. We had a serious safety issue on Route 11, where we had people walking in the streets, we didn't have streetlights. We actually had, just last May, a year ago, May, you may remember, about a year ago this time, or I think it was March, we had a young man killed on Route 11, near the McDonald's. We worked with state D O T, we acquired the necessary funds, state D O T put sidewalks in, all the way from Bear Road, all the way to about 200 feet north of Claudenoi Road. Dave Smith told me, the regional director of the New York State D O T, that he will complete those sidewalks for us this year. So we will have safe sidewalks all the way from Bear Road to, to Route 31. So I'm very proud of that, we did that. The high intensity LED lights that you see that light up that corridor, to make it safer for the residents, and for the people who work there, and the people who shop there, are now a reality. The sidewalks we're talking about here, if you take a look on Route 11 from Route 31, the sidewalks end just before the Cicero High School, going east, and the concern was, is that we have students walking in the road on a state highway, because we don't have sidewalks. So in conjunction with Assemblyman Neil Sterpi, we applied for New York State grants, we were awarded those grants, these sidewalks will not cost the town of Cicero residents any money, any tax money. So all of this is being paid for by, by New York State. So by awarding this, we will have sidewalks, will commence this summer, and our children will be out of the state highway. So I'm very proud of that achievement, again. It's a good thing. Did we get a second on that?
Yes.
Okay, any, any other comments on the sidewalks? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, any extensions, we pass unanimously, thank you.
Move the adoption resolution to approve Mr. Dominic Poczalski, Poczalski, as a full-time co-enforcement officer, rate of $26.29 per hour, effective June 3rd, 2019, this position will fill a vacancy.
Second.
Any board comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those nay, any extensions, we pass unanimously again, thank you.
Move the adoption resolution to approve the following individuals, Joshua Brazil, Jack Doran, Devon Hastings, Evan Wright, seasonal highway laborers, at a pay rate of $12.25 an hour, effective June 3rd, 2019, contingent of them passing the pre-employment physical.
Second. Any comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those nay, any extensions, we pass unanimously again.
Thank you. Move the adoption resolution to hire Alini Inis, as a seasonal recreation tenant, at a pay rate of $11.10 an hour, the start date is July 16th, 2019, budget code P702013.
Second.
Any board comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, any extensions, we pass unanimously. Mr. Conway.
Move the adoption of resolution to approve the following purchase for the highway department, $26,000 Steel Sales Incorporated, for 6800 feet of six-inch and 10-inch plastic pipe, B, B B five one one four five.
Zero four five. Second, any board comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those nay, any extensions, we pass unanimously, thank you.
Move the adoption resolution to approve the following parks and recreation department, $7,720 to Ryan Henico's Decorative Concrete, to repair, fill, and seal the concrete floor in the shop office, budget code A1620.405, and $1,996.40, the contract amount for 2019, to Toshiba Financial Services, for Toshiba copier, the county contract period is 39 months, from June 2019 to August 2022. Full contract amount for 39 months is $11,122.80, that is $285.20 per month, budget code $8.40, and budget code A6772.42, $400.
Second. Any board comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those nay, any extensions, we pass unanimously, thank you. I'll move for the adoption resolution to approve and authorize the supervisor to execute the fireworks permit, from the fireworks coordinator from American Fireworks Display Limited Liability Corporation, and to accept the $100 permit fee from Lake Shore Yacht and Country Club at 6777 Lake Shore Road, Cicero, New York, for, on, well, on, not for, but on Friday, July 5th, 2019, at dusk, 9:30 PM to 10:00 PM. Second. Any board comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, any extensions, we pass unanimously, thank you.
Move the adoption resolution to declare the following items surplus, that have no use to the town and be disposed, two Dell hard drive, D12M110711-11, and D11S150814-11, two monitors, Acer V213H, and HP Contact CNC212QWWT, LogWid speakers, S120WD445XM, and a Dell mouse, CN-0DVRH.
Second, any board comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nay, any extensions, we pass unanimously. Before we open it up to public discussion, I just want to remind everybody that summer's here already, Monday is Memorial Day, and our Cicero American Legion will be hosting their annual parade that begins at 8:30, right, Tracy?
Yeah, we have to be there.
We'll be there at 8:30. Okay, but the parade itself will start at 9:30 at the.
Cicero Cemetery.
Cemetery.
That goes to.
It'll go from Route 11, south to Route 31, it'll take a right on Route 31 and go to our American Legion. These, these folks put on a great parade, our fire departments participate, our police department participates, and a lot of folks in our community participate. But let's not forget what it's all about, it's all about the people who have given their lives so that we can sit here today, and hopefully not pick on each other and criticize each other. Anything you want to add to that, Tracy?
Oh, they have ceremony right there.
Right, ceremony will be at the end of the parade.
Yes, very terrible.
Okay, thank you. So hopefully, we'll see you all there on Monday. Now we'll open up to public input, would anyone like to address the board?
That logo up in behind, is that a town logo, in the brand?
It is, it is.
It's the current town logo.
What is wrong with that? I mean, I relate to that, I, you know, I wasn't born, I was born after 1807, but I relate to that more than I did any one of those series that was up there. So, that's my opinion.
Thank you for that.
James Deladonna, 8798 Emmett's Market, Talon Perutin. You had to talk about a subject that is near to everybody's heart, and that's taxes. By the way, Judy, when you do the logo, put dollar signs on the, the logo for the taxes here, okay? I wish I could have come a little early, unfortunately, I had some health issues over the year, and anyway, I'm here tonight. In January, I got my property tax bill, and without a change in my assessment, my taxes went up 6%. I keep hearing all this nonsense on the radio, on television, how the governor has told every town and village, city, there's a 2% cap. So when I ask people, nobody can give me an answer. I called the governor's office, they told me to refer me back to my state senator and to Sterpi. I call them up, we'll get back here. Nobody gets back, call again, they got back. That 2% is only a guide, and if your town board decides, the majority of them, that they want to raise it more than 2%, they can go ahead and do that. And then when I came here, I came looking for Mr. Vaneski, he wasn't here the day I came, nobody in the tax receivers office could answer my question, they said, go to the tax office, I went to the tax office, person was not there, and I ran into somebody here in the courtroom, and we were talking, and I'm not gonna mention any names, but said, hey, you got a palace of a garage that you got to pay for, you got a brand-new fire department that you have to pay for. So, I don't see the board representing me, or most constituents, in being a little frugal with the spending. I heard you just say that we need the revenue, well, you got revenue coming in like crazy, but I don't see anything about putting anything away or saving any money, that's what I see, okay? My neighbors asked me to come here to talk tonight, because we just got a letter that said our property taxes are going up. Mine are going up 15%. I don't know if you got to raise it 15%, I'm retired and on a fixed income at 72 years of age, I didn't get a 15% rate, okay? And when I get this letter from the new town assessor, and we got more assessors coming in and out of this town over the last 13 years that I've been here, this is the newest one, I never met her, but I get a letter, and it's almost like you think we're a bunch of hot dogs, in the sense that this notice raises your assessment, but don't think your taxes are gonna go up. Well, unless you have an exception, anybody in their right mind knows your taxes are gonna go up, okay? And a rate of, of going up of 50%, I think is not right, and this will be the fourth time that I've had a raise, that I will come in flat, and each time I come, the assessor that they had, oh, I didn't know. For example, the first time I came, I just had moved here, and I get a threat, oh, come out, look at your house. Oh, come on, there's my car, I'll put you in my car, I'll take you there, okay? Save the gas money. Then they calm down, they came out to the house, oh, we made a mistake, you don't have a ranch, you have a contemporary. I call it, Kate, they call it contemporary. Well, what do you want? I want my taxes to be lower than my neighbor, who's got 800 square, 800 square feet more than I do, I'll put the second smallest house on the block, okay? Then I come and apply for a deck, all right? I said, what makes my taxes go up, a deck or a patio? Neither one, you're not assessed on that. I put up a deck, I get a letter, your taxes are going up, you reassess. Why? You put a deck. I said, the town told me they don't assess that. Who told you that? I said, the building department, and at that time, Chip Duzinski. The guy makes a few calls, he says, oh, you're right, you know, I don't have to change anything. I said, what do you mean, you don't have to change anything? I can leave it just the way it is, that's my right. Second hour in time, okay? I said, fine, I got up, I started leaving, he said, where are you going? I said, I'm going to my attorney, you'll hear from him next. Wait, calm down. You want me to calm down? No, you calm down, okay? The third time was three years ago, was it three years we did the full town assessment, okay? I said, I wasn't home, I had gone to all the meetings to see what they would do, and I called them up, I said, I wasn't here, could you please come out? So the gentleman comes out, and I said, look, I have a sidewalk garage, what, what did you take that loft up there for? Oh, they're empty for four bedrooms. Said, I got three bedrooms. Come inside. No, I think, no, come inside. I made him go up the ladder into the loft and look, okay? Then I took him inside, I said, you have me for a finished basement? Yes, I don't have a finished basement. Or downstairs, we're on downstairs. Then I turn around, now we started the second. They got you for 75% second floor, I don't have you for 25% second floor. So again, all these adjustments, that the assumptions were made. Now I get this letter, how did anybody raise me $34,000 in my tax? Did they come to my house? I didn't see anybody. Did they drive by? If they did, I brought documentation here that shows in my neighborhood, okay, 2017, we all filed the eyes at 18, I had $45,000 worth of damage from hail, all right? Did anybody say, Jim, your house is $45,000 less, if I had left it broken, would they have lowered me down $45,000? Of course not. But, you know, it's like the criminal who's told, you know, you gotta prove that you're innocent. No, you have to prove the criminal guilty. Well, nobody's proven that my house is worth the $34,000 additional money. So something's corrupt here, in my opinion, all right?
Nothing is corrupt.
Well, again, I said, in my opinion, okay? And I have a right to say that, okay? I don't think what's going on here, I get this form, okay, because I said I'd like to appeal, and questions on here like, you know, did you pay cash for your house? Did you mortgage it? What the heck, whose business is that? What I do. What does the house work? Okay? I'm waiting to see, I didn't read it all the way through, I'm looking for, please tell us the name of your firstborn, you know? All this information, what? Tell me where you get the assessment on the house? But nobody can do that, all right? And I have to come and prove what you said, not you, but the assessor said, I gotta prove them wrong. No, they need to prove to me that it's weren't that much more. And by the way, you said people wanted to come into Cicero, well, the last time we did the full town, okay, five of my neighbors sold, all right? Yeah, people came in. Without even this month going by, two neighbors have already put their houses up for sale with the new assessment, okay? They get tired of it. And all I know is that I'd like you to turn around and take a look at what's going on, what are you spending? You know? What am I, they're saying they're spending like drunken sailors, and then they.
It's not, it's not true.
They courted John McCain, it's an insult to drunken sailors, that's something, the spending.
Mr. Deladonna, you raised some specific questions that I can't answer tonight.
Okay.
And, but I would be happy if you would, number one, make an appointment to come and see me.
No, I don't want to see you, that's, to me, that's a joke, I've said to you before, what goes in that office stays in there, it doesn't come out here, okay?
Okay, no, no, that's fine, but we'll explain with, with the tax receiver, because your, your tax bill is comprised of at least three parts, three or four parts. You have a school tax.
Oh, the tax, we're not talking school tax.
No, 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 but I'm talking about, okay, but you, on your tax bill, you have a school tax, you have a county property tax, you have a town property tax, you have a sewer tax that's assessed by the county, right?
I don't know that. My point is that if you turn around and you do that, then the proof should be on you, not on me, okay? Also, when I contacted the state and I asked, my school taxes, why can't I vote on my property taxes? There's no regulation against it, they just won't allow you to do that. Who's there? The people that are supposed to represent me? I said, "At least I should be able to vote on the town portion of it, okay?" Also, I would suggest, then when you turn around and you put something forward, like we voted on the garage, alright? And I voted, "No," I've got to admit that, okay?
Fine.
I want on there, if this gets passed, you can expect eighty percent, six percent, ten percent increase in your taxes. Then it will fly as well as when you see what your taxes are going to be raised, okay? I just got a letter telling me my taxes are going up because my neighbors wanted lights in the neighborhood. Fine, they go up one hundred and forty dollars. Now this is going to raise my taxes even more unless I prove that, I've got to prove that it's not, okay? The other thing is, I've spoken to you a couple of times about the sales taxes, alright? You tell me there's nothing we can do about that, the county takes it, alright? I talked to friends of mine, you used to live in Norchell. Sixty thousand people now, it's about forty because they're running out of that city, you know, for tax, okay? And director for the city. I said, "You know anything about the county grabbing your taxes?" "Oh, they grab our taxes all the time, no longer." I said, "What do you mean no longer? We look like they sue us, okay? When they sued us, we went to an arbitrator. And the arbitrator said, "Norchell, you get X percent and county gets X percent. Nobody here has done that at all, okay? Fight them, keep the money here, help us out a little bit, alright?" And the last thing I want to say is that when you guys run, you run for office, okay? You come into the neighborhood, we see you, "Hi, how are you? And vote for me because all those other people are bad." Bad or good, this is the time you should be walking through the neighborhood. You should be coming through neighborhoods and talking to people, not just when it's election time. We'd like to see you. I see Judy all the time, alright? But I don't see any of you people walk through the neighborhood, knock on the door, ring, "Hi, how you doing, is everything okay? Is there anything I can do for you, we've got any complaints?" Believe me, you don't come out because you would get an earful, alright? Anyway, thank the board for its time and that's all I have to say.
Mr. Deladonna, reach out to me. You and I have talked before.
I know.
You brought a lot of issues. No, 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 because I take the time to explain things to you and try to get you answers. So if you come to the specifics, because you've raised ten points tonight, I'm not going to take the time to go through each one of them.
I don't want to.
But come and see me and we'll talk.
To me, I've mentioned, to me, I think it's a waste. I'm sorry Mark, that's the way I feel. I talked to you about a simple thing, like where our neighborhood is, there's a tree that's ready to go down, okay? And when I said something to you, I never got a response. So I called the building department and they said, "You've got to fill out a formal complaint." So I make the effort, I come down here, fill out a formal complaint.
If I missed it, then I apologize.
Anyway, I filed the formal complaint. Supposedly, Dave went up there and looked at it. Now it's a tree that's hanging farrow into the street, bungee cords are holding it up, alright?
Chris, if that's a safety issue, we've got to get on top of it. I'm sorry, I wasn't aware of it.
Okay, anyway, Emmett's Market, Town Hall. Anyway, he says to me, "There's nothing we can do on private property." I said, "Wait a minute, the tree is ninety percent in the street."
Right.
That's city property. It's going to fall on somebody. My neighbors won't let the kids go by, I don't drive by my car, we're afraid it's going to fall down. Anyway, Dave tells me, I went out there and I got the copy delivery sent right here. I went out there and it's good, it's safe. I pushed off. I said, "How many trees can I push on today and it won't fall over tomorrow when the wind hits?"
Alright, this is the first I've heard of a tree. So Dave, or Chris, if you look at that tomorrow, be glad to meet you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Hey Riley, eighty-nine, can you call Pat? I just had a question for the parks department, Joey's here. Have you had any luck getting a lifeguard?
No, did you break a certified?
I'm not. If I were certified, I would do it part-time.
Can you get certified?
I vote yes.
I don't know, first, I'm not a great swimmer.
Well, you can be a good swimmer. We have exhausted every possible place to find a lifeguard. And if anybody's paying attention, State Parks needs a thousand. Silver Beach got three, they need eight or nine. They aren't going to open, they aren't going to get what they're looking for. I met with a number of people, I've talked, I've listened, I've read at Nextdoor and I've read all the comments. We're not doing our job. You need to find some kind of supervisory staff that have had three years' experience or two seasons of experience to even open. We did have four lifeguards that were first-season lifeguards. We would put together patchwork of guards. We are not getting them, we did not get an outcry or, you know, people that came forward after the articles have been out there. So no, we're not going to be open this summer. I've come to the conclusion that my responsibility is to make available resources in this community to all residents. And looking at it, United Shores is right here in our town, it has swimming. People can go there, they can get there. So for this summer, no, we're not swimming at William Park. We will make the effort next year. We've had a lot of discussions about holding courses and whatnot to try and get more people certified. You know, everybody's having a problem, there's a lack of guards and there's a lack of supervisory guards. I apologize, but we can't grow these people and we have to have the qualified, you know, certified people because we're a state-certified facility and permitted, so...
Well, I certainly appreciate your effort.
Yeah, thank you, and I appreciate the question, I mean, we're... We are not hiring lifeguards because Chris is building a building. And we are not hiring guards and paying them the right money because the assessor raised people's rates.
Right.
We don't have the bodies. We are not...
We are in our, we did a salary study last year, we had HR do a salary study. We're on Harvard County. I mean, everyone's struggling and I think that, so it's not that we're not paying enough and I took...
The facility, there's so many jobs in this community that are paying fifteen dollars now for retail and for grocery store and things like that. We're on par with other lifeguarding. There's just too many positions and not enough of the people.
I'm actually going to disagree on the pay. I'm looking at simple economics, supply and demand. Typically, when demand goes up and supply goes down, prices go up. And perhaps the problem is no one's paying lifeguards enough. If we start paying, this is really just basic economics. If we start paying, if we offer more and other entities offer more, there will be an incentive for more people to become certified lifeguard, supervisory lifeguards, et cetera. You know, I mean, the market rate is obviously not high enough at this point to generate enough interest in people becoming lifeguards. The solution, again, when you have demand and low supply, I mean...
Are, is this town board willing to put that kind of money into the budget for Parks and Rec and not have the backlash that I've been reading by past supervisors who say that the Parks and Rec budget is too high already?
Well, I can't answer that question right now.
If I put that together, I don't see this worth improving those kind of increases to get to the salaries.
But you say those kind of increases, that kind of money. I mean, do we, the question is, do we know or is it possible to find out? And this is not, this is a rhetorical question because I don't know exactly how much it would take to generate that level of interest. But clearly, if, you know, there are certain jobs where they pay more because... My wife used to teach in the city. When she moved out of the city, she took a pay cut. City pays well, why? Honestly, you're going to have a hard time finding people to teach in the city of Syracuse if you don't pay a lot. It's a difficult job, so she's out there and more even took a pay cut. I have two friends who moved to Cicero recently, they took massive pay cuts to get out of the city. So, you know, if you have a job people don't want, you have to pay more to get people to take it. So, but I don't know, are we paying fifteen an hour? If it needed to be twenty-five an hour? No, I can't see us possibly proving that.
We're paying fifteen and sixteen an hour. And the problem is, is that it's four or five hundred dollars to get your certifications. The classes are held in skinny atlas, not local. We don't have a pool, we don't have a location. Liverpool High School pool is closed for sixteen months now, so we can't even utilize that.
What about the village of Syracuse? What about the village of Syracuse pool?
It's not a large enough pool to have lifeguarding training. And then if we're going to allow our residents to put them through training, how do I guarantee that they're going to come here and not go somewhere else?
Well, you could do that contraction, theoretically, you could do that contraction unless there's some kind of prohibition on any municipality.
Something about minors, I mean, there's a lot to...
Well, no, yeah, because on contraction capacity, that's, we could get off. I'm just saying, I honestly think that the problem could be, but it would not just be out of the paint. It would not just be our problem. If it's other people are having problems getting lifeguards and clearly it's a market-wide problem. At some point, people are going to have to start paying more to attract people or there just won't be lifeguards and there won't be the swimming opportunities. Again, it's just basic economics.
You're right, and everyone. The county just completed filling their complimentary staff for United Shores. And you saw the state, you saw the village of Solvay, can't open their pool. Silver Beach said, "We're going to open." Well, that's all great, we're going to open, but without the bodies in the chairs, you can't have a facility.
And lifeguarding.
The regulations, the state of the county is pretty tight.
So I'm going to say something in defense of our Parks and Rec department and our director of Parks and Rec, who in my opinion, does an excellent job. You know, we can't, no one could anticipate that everyone that would not be able to find lifeguards this year. If we had anticipated that there would be a shortage of lifeguards or you would have this young generation not want to work and apply for a lifeguard position, we would have made adjustments in our budget. I didn't see it, Solvay didn't see it, state of New York didn't see it. And I took issue with Mr. Blonsberry on his radio show that I am not going to get into a bidding war with Anadaga County, with Ryan McMahon, nor with the mayor of the city of Syracuse to try to steal people. I'm not going to do that, that's not how I run this business, okay? So we know there's an issue, it's not just us. It's the other municipalities, some other municipalities have had an issue and it's something that we will discuss and look at for next year.
Thank you John for your comments, I do appreciate it.
Thank you. I, you know, I thought about, I heard Mr. Vineski's comments and I... Regardless of, and I'm not talking about bidding war, again, it's just, I don't think anybody's paying them enough, so, thank you.
Mr. Snyder?
I have Mr. Snyder. Four is yours.
Don Snyder, Lumville Road, Town Highway Garage Coordinator, whatever. We have a new video and then I'll give you a little update on where we're at. This is a video that the Wasnickas put together this last week ago. You're now looking at the completed structure. This is the inside, steel is done, we're flooring the second of four hundred and fifty-yard floor. We have one more quarter to go, which is going to be tomorrow. This is the second floor that we're doing. Four hundred and fifty yards, trust me, it's a lot of concrete, it's like forty-five trucks. Quite a lineup, quite a coordination effort on our general contractors' schedule. Yeah, I'm not sure this is Chris's view before his son. There was a little discussion about the, you know, Chris, the last video was definitely Chris's, it was a great video and a great sound. This little device the guy is standing on right in front of the picture is a laser-level driven device. We obviously have a smoking port, you have the drains in the middle of the floor. That little critter does it, it's really amazing. Now you're going from the garage area into the maintenance area where we'll be doing maintenance on our vehicles. This is a room that is totally devoted to the fire pump system and the sprinkler system. But now the room straight ahead that's there is the new parks department for Chris's storage of all of his parts for his vehicles. This is the mechanic room upstairs, which has all the air handling units for the office area. We have in-floor heat in the garage area. So when you're working on big trucks, you're going to meet them, you're really working on cold concrete, it's going to last long. Now here's a video of the whole site. The area on the left side at the bottom of the picture here is the construction of the salt shed. Salt shed will very much like the one we have on here now. That door there where the concrete truck is backing out will become the entrance to the garage. They go in at this end, they park on an angle, they can park their plows. They don't take the front plow off when they put in there. They put the wing on the floor, now they chain them up so they don't fall and hit somebody. So it would be a much safer way to store and park our trucks. That bay that's right there by the arrow is a wash bay where they can drive in and clean a lot of crap off their vehicles before they put them in the park situation. This is Chris's fish pantry area in the back with his favorite pine tree that we tried to save and he actually told us, "We don't die if we cut it down," so that's it. So there's a...
I did offer that tree to Mayor Minor.
You what?
I did offer that tree to Mayor Minor when she was in office for the Christmas tree and she turned us down.
Good, we're glad.
Chris says, "I don't know if Chris paid those people to leave the project."
Yeah, so I think that's all. Couple of update things. We finally have gotten the conduit in the ground to the new power pole to bring high-lowers power to the station. The, we now have to wait in line for a nine-oh to come in, put in the transformer and pull the wires to the pole. The pole, as I said, is all set and the shut-off, the connections, everybody got there, circuit breakers are already in. We today finished the in-ground installation of the four-inch, four-inch gas line going to the building. We have a lot of users of gas in this building. We need to look very carefully at our utilities for next year. That was completed today. We actually now just have to wait for them to come in and put the meter assembly on that line and then we would have gas. Our project extended the gas main across the street about a hundred and twenty-five feet, is that right, Pat?
One fifty.
One hundred and fifty feet. And then we have a shut-off valve on the north side of thirty-one. Then we came underneath thirty-one, had to hit the water line, had a problem last night. But that line is now in, so we should have gas and electric. I started to say the end of the month, but I realized the end of the month is next week, so it's probably not going to be the end of the month, but before the middle of next month, we should be all powered up both gas and electric. And the salt barn is being put together, most of the foundation. Work will be done by the end of the week. And then we'll see the sidewalls go up for that. Any questions?
I'd like to say something now. Yep. It bothers me that there are people in this town that say I'm building the Taj Mahal or that we're building the Taj Mahal. I invite any of you, any resident in this town to leave your lawnmower, to leave your chainsaw, to leave your weed eater out twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year and see what you have at the end of that year. Don't cover up with a canvas, leave it out in your yard and just leave it there.
One of the people who's going door-to-door telling people that is a liar.
We have over three million dollars worth of equipment sitting outside rotting in the sun, in the snow, in the salt, day after day after day. My mechanics literally lay it on a floor that is wet because the doors leak and the roof leaks with water running down across that floor. I find it disturbing that people think we're building this huge building. This building is going to hold forty pieces of equipment. And everything will be inside and kept dry and warm and in good shape. People that are saying we're building a Taj Mahal, they just bother the heck out of me.
The thing we've got to remember is the current building was built over fifty years ago. It was built when we had, I believe it was five or four or five plows. It was also built during the time where we all had to have our public places have bomb shelters. So very ineffective, the space, I mean, if you look at where the office is for the highway department, it is in a space for all four of those people in less space than we have up on the dikes right now. I mean, the building we're building, granted, is sixty-two thousand square feet, it's a lot of square feet. But there's two reasons. One, we're putting everything in the garage, or we hope to put everything in the garage. And two, it's a fifty-year building. This building will be used for at least the next fifty years. We have built it with the ability to expand it. We got caught with some things that we didn't really want to get stuck with.
Right.
And I have to go on record to say that this facility will still have some wishlist things probably after we take possession of it and move in. That's only the way it is. I mean, as we're, there are things that both Chris and I and Don have seen that we wished we had done, that will make it much better. But it's not something that has to be done today. It can be done in the future and it probably will be required, but it's not now. And the numbers have not changed from the first public announcement we had that we needed one point four million dollars more to bond issue. And trust me, we're watching that number like a hawk, like it was our money. And that's why, for example, Don and I were there with a warm main break yesterday until eight-thirty. That's why we're there all day today when they're putting the gas lines, so we make sure it goes in right. So there's a lot of things that go to make up this building. And it's going to be exciting, we're going to have a great open house. Don's prediction is probably October, November. Don Snyder's prediction is probably we're at the first of the year. Everybody's cheering for Don, but that's okay. after the first year, everybody's cheering for Don, but that's okay, I can take it, I hope I'm wrong. But the other problem we've got is depending on when that comes, if it comes the day after he starts his solar process, then it might as well be in the spring, so. So you've got to all pray for a nice, quiet, warm winter.
Great, and thank you again. I never cease to mention Don Snyder and Don Blox, the hours and the professionalism and the hard work that they put into this, thank you so much.